Okay, so I'm going to call to order the Pennsyl County Regional School District's School Committee Budget Workshop of Tuesday, January 22nd of 2019. Just a couple of minutes after six. And formally, take attendance. Wayne Adams, Joanna Blanchard, Bill Yule, Emily Dwyer.
Yeah.
Marie Falciani.
Yep.
De Klaas.
Yes.
Chris Redding.
Yes.
And Deanna Truitt.
Yes, Joanna's walking in right now.
Okay. So since this isn't an official business manager's workshop, we don't have to meet a quorum?
We have a slight problem. Apparently I brought my reading glasses somewhere.
Walk back to your car. Do you guys still want to rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
No, we don't have to.
No?
Yeah.
You're going to have to ask?
We probably should sing the National Anthem though.
Okay. Yeah, first item of the agenda is revenue administration, teacher contracts, benefits discussion. So I'm going to, so we, we don't have to vote on anything, but I'm still going to have us, as we begin to call on you. So I'm going to try to open it up.
Sure. Justin is in Groveland this evening at the Selectmans Meeting, I think. So myself and Greg will help sort of lead us through this first budget workshop. And I think we broke it out with two budget workshops, I think, and then broken out, or is it three?
Four.
Four.
Four. Wow.
Okay.
I thought we had condensed down the thing.
Okay, so, but tonight, the topics of workshop for discussion are revenue administration, teacher contracts, and benefits discussion. And we have our budget workshops. Hopefully if Greg needs his reading glasses, we can help him somehow with that, but, yeah. And I think more or less, we'd certainly open up for discussion. I wanted to provide everyone something that Greg and Justin and I had worked on. Greg, the majority of the credit here, we can hand those out. And this looks a little bit at revenues. Both Dr. Bartholomew and I met with our Essex County legislators last week, with superintendents as well from the area.
Do you have any extras?
Yep.
I need two more this way.
There we go.
Oh, they're all good, dude.
They're coming.
Think I'm hard to see one.
Thanks, Dana. And in meeting with them, and the representatives from our legislature, there was a lot of discussion around, in particular, changes to state funding to schools. And there seems to be a lot of ongoing dialogue, but certainly is an appetite for that discussion. So we wanted to sort of take a look at, in particular, what does this, what does it look like for Pennsyl? What's the story of Pennsyl, particularly over the last 10 years? So going back...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just, at some point, for people who aren't as familiar, or who haven't been on the committee before, like go through what each of the titles means. Because I know that I, it took me a long time to kind of figure it out.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I have to, yep. So thinking back from, to 2009, over the last 10 years in particular. So we broke out this into multiple columns, and other than the year, the first one being the operating expenses. So that's our actual budget. So in 2009, it was a little over $30 million. And then this current year, it's $39 million, so, okay. So that's our operating budget, that's the budget that the committee votes on, and that's the budget that we, we work with as a school district. That operating budget is made up of various revenue. There's two primary sources of the operating budget's revenue. Chapter 70 aid, which is aid from the state that goes to local municipalities, okay, that is meant for education aid. And then there's local assessments. So this is the assessment that comes directly from our local property taxes in the three communities that contribute towards the regional school budget. Being a regional school district, we have a couple other sources of revenue. Number one, we have regional transportation aid that's added there, and that we get funding for that. And then we have other revenues. And Greg, maybe you can sort of describe what other revenues might consist of.
In the earlier part of the chart, there was some school building assistance reimbursement for older projects, but mostly as you go through it, what you'll see is the basic categories we use, which are miscellaneous receipts, which is kind of a catch-all account and not very big. Any E and D we do, which lately has just offset the OPEV and the accounts for stabilization. Any Medicaid reimbursement we got, we had, and interest income from the banks. It's pretty basic of what's been tucked in there. It's not a lot of different categories. Our revenue is fairly easy to predict when we're doing budgets, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room. It's pretty easy to project going out.
What's not necessarily reflected is maybe grants in particular, that's not necessarily included there, and additionally, circuit breaker is not necessarily reflected.
Right, but none of those things would go to our operating expense budget, which is our 101 general fund budget that we vote on. You'll see those grants are reflected as reductions in that budget that we charge things that would normally go there to it. So it very well balances out by taking those things out of it. It keeps it consistent year over year, because those things change all the time. This is just the basic things that the state will contribute to, non-grant-wise, and what we get from the cities and towns.
Quick, quick question, clarification. So when you were talking to the legislators the other day, essentially it's the Chapter 70 and the regional transportation that they could, on a statewide budget...
Yes and no, right. Chapter 70 for sure, that's the big one.
Yep.
Regional transportation, having it fully funded to us would be, that certainly would be a great add. We're, I think it's about $300,000 underfunded, from what their actual formula is.
It varies, but that's a safe number, yeah.
Generally speaking, we have been pretty consistently about $300,000 over the last so many years under what the formula says they would reimburse us at. I don't believe they, I mean, it was the 1970s when regional transportation came to be.
I think they ever did.
And I don't think they've ever actually fully funded what they said they were going to do. They did talk a great deal about circuit breaker, which is special education reimbursement. When costs of special education, particular students, rises above a certain threshold, that they reimburse you a certain percentage of that, so that the burden does not fall squarely on the shoulders. But it's a reimbursement too, it's not upfront expenses. And that's where they talked about the cost of special ed and trying to manage that. And not that special education is the problem here, it's the cost of it. And that the rising cost of special education, in particular of students of greater need, far exceeds, percentage-wise, year by year, what the general increases or inflationary increase may be in districts and municipalities. So it has eaten up larger percentages of our operating budget from year to year. So there definitely was a lot of dialogue around that. We had some back and forth, a little bit, about Chapter 70 formula. Because the Chapter 70 formula is largely based on student enrollment. And you get money based on how many students you have. Now, over the last 10 years, Pennsyl's student enrollment has decreased by 25%. That has been... ...numbers. That is an issue of rural and suburban schools, in particular regional school districts. Smaller towns who chose to regionalize in the 60s, in the 50s and 60s and 70s on purpose, because they knew they were small, and they regionalized to pool their resources together to provide greater opportunities and make better use of fixed resources, like a business office and central office and so forth. So when you go out to central and western Mass, and including the regional districts even in eastern Massachusetts, almost all have seen reductions in student enrollment over the last 10 to 15 years. And with that comes a reduction in state aid, but not necessarily a reduction in the cost to educate students. And that's the dilemma that we have, we're facing, that many other rural or regional school districts are facing. So there's a lot of discussion over what really should contribute to a change in Chapter 78. And sometimes that discussion will go one way or the other, in that it will be supporting larger school districts with students who have greater needs over school districts based on smaller numbers of students. So there's a lot of discussion over how to balance that out and ensure that there's a fair and equitable way of addressing it, including issues around healthcare, the percentage increases for healthcare, which fortunately our union has negotiated with our business team here that we went to GIC. That's a much more controlled annual increase from year to year, as opposed to other plans which can go 6, 7, 8, 10% increases from year to year in the cost of it. And so that alone would eat up a district's increase from year to year, so. So I think those are some points, but I think the key part are those last two columns that you see, and that the percentage 10 years ago that was funded by Chapter 78 to what it is now, it goes from 43%, 43.5% to just under 33%, 32.9%. And then on the flip side, it's the local assessment that's picking up the difference.
Well, you take a 10% of $40 million, it's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. And this is a similar story across the state, and then at the same time, we have a reduction in student population, and we're faced with trying to match that. But kids and schools are not widgets and machines. You can't just reduce a teacher every time you lose 13 students. It doesn't, doesn't work that way, right? There's balances to that. And that's, I think, one of the struggles, as Dr. Bartholomew and I particularly work with Greg and the principals about, how do we balance this out, where we've had a 25% reduction in students? Our staffing reductions have not mirrored that in the last 10 years. But yet, when you look at our operating expenses, they have not, they've not risen dramatically at the same time. Can we figure out our staffing patterns where there are some reductions, because the need is not there the way it was 10 years ago, the way it was five years ago? And when we had some of those grants that came in a few years ago, that sort of pushed this discussion off a few more years, because it allowed us to do some unique things, but here we are, and that's a discussion we need to have.
Joanna?
Greg, where did the athletic fees go? Are those in other revenues?
Athletic fees, all we use them for right now is transportation for athletics. So if you look...
But in this, like the grants, you mean, like...
You won't see, you won't see it there.
They don't fall...
No, because it's not in the regular budget either. It's a zero line budget.
Okay.
We'll say the neat line is, we'll say athletic transportation zero, offset by $100 and some thousand dollars in transportation.
But back here, was it ever under other revenue?
No.
Okay. So, so if you look in the budget book...
Actually, yes, if you look in...
The athletic revolving account accounts for that, the income and then the fees associated. And that's where it always, it was always like that?
Yep.
Does, got a question?
Yeah, I did some reading and understood that the superintendents in the state of Massachusetts have been at least discussing class action suit, because the state has not held up to their promise. Do you have any information to share on that in terms of progress?
Yeah, that's similar to what I was just sort of discussing, although the superintendents who are preparing that are typically representative of larger school districts with large school enrollments, who would benefit from increased Chapter 70 aid. And the way they would change the way they fund that, in particular giving more money for students who have needs that cost more to educate, in particular ELL students, and, you know, students who require that type of support, so outside of special education. So I'm not sure what they're necessarily preparing is going to help Pennsyl Regional School District all that much.
Doesn't seem like regional schools are getting much help, period.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, when you have multiple towns involved, you have to work for your representation to make sure that your needs are met. I mean, there is the regional school transportation aid that's never fully been funded. That alone would certainly give us a boost, but that's about a $300,000 boost, that's not a $3 million boost. And certainly altering, and the way they support special education funding would also help us as a regional school district too.
Let me ask a question around special ed transportation. We've had a conversation before, some of us, I know I've talked to Dr. Bartholomew about setting up a special ed transportation that was collaborative, say for the North Shore, where instead of us having to transport X number of students, maybe we could be transporting some students from here, some from Newport, some from Triton, and they would be sharing that, so that we're not footing the entire bill. Where is that conversation?
Yeah, Greg, do you... There is a conversation. Well, let me step back a second. The idea you have is, kind of happens right now in practice, but not in, for the formality. For example, if we had a child going to a facility in Beverly, what we would do is we'd contact any town between here and Bev... You have anybody going there? And right now, that, they might pick up someone in Georgetown, someone in Danbury, someone in Beverly before they get there, and then we'd all share the cost of that van trip for the day.
So you're saying that's actually happening right now?
We've been doing that for years here, yes.
Okay.
There is additional conversations right now about bringing in-district special ed transportation back within the district, but that's in the early stages of kind of talking about it right now, because we need some help from our employees and things like that, we're going to kind of hop in early for an hour. Because we do pay a pretty hefty fee for transportation, but right now, when you bring it in, it's hard to find people that you can guarantee they're going to be there on a daily basis and have backups. So we're going, we're going to explore that part of it as well, right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you want me to go through the rest of the revenue, David? Okay, if you turn to the front part of Section 2, you will see our revenue projected. Again, in all those categories we talked about, yep, there's not, not a lot here. So basically, what, you'll see what we did for fiscal '17, these are actual, fiscal year '18 is actual, fiscal year '19 is what you base your budget on that we're currently working on now, but of course, the year's not over yet, so it's projected. Fiscal year '20 budget, this is where I always begin when we have our conversations about budget. How much money do we have? We always work for, work from this number. So, Chapter 70, the increase you see there is based upon the historical fact that we usually get about $25 to $30 extra a kid in Chapter 70. The governor's budget will come out on Thursday, and that number will be the number we choose. It could go up, it may go down, but we'll see how it does. You'll see a big increase in regional transportation aid. It's not as big as it appears, because that 582, 207 is what we actually finally got from the legislature, or the 508 was the number the governor proposed, and when it finally came out, it was 582. So I'm going to assume we're just going to get level funded with that one. That's really just a level funding, even though it looks like an increase on the sheet. However, when we got our first regional transportation aid, it looks like they're going to cut us 40 grand. So that's what I mean. That number is very much subject to appropriation, and it's a number the legislature can manipulate, depending on the state budget if they need money at the meeting.
I was told last week they will make us whole on that.
They will make us whole at the end. We promised you in June, and there's nothing you can do about it to make up any revenue. It'll be there. All right, I hope so, but...
What would happen if we went with, I'm still working on this, what if we, I did some figures, and I'm only speaking on behalf of Groveland, no other town. The research that I've been doing on this tells me that we need 15 buses and not 21. How significant would that be if all of the facts came in exactly the way...
We'd save 25% on our transportation costs, or for the sake of a million, we'd save $250,000.
All right.
And what you're saying is unreasonable, but it's like, like we talked about earlier, it just lengthens the bus runs, that's all it really does.
All right, but just, I want to plant that seed, because in order for us to move forward on some of the things that are on this agenda, we're going to need additional cuts in order to get my vote. That's all.
Oh, no, understood, we're $300,000 on what's just proposed, we're short right now. And that already has pretty, some cuts in it, so...
I just want to plant that seed.
Sure. Medicaid reimbursement, this has become a substantial source of revenue. It used to be a number more in the range of like $45,000, but there is a way that you could get more money out of it, and as you can see, we've been a little, pretty successful about getting it out. It basically requires time and motion studies and things like that that you're required to do, and they weren't being done, so now we're doing them. So we get a pretty good chunk of change out of that. So I'm going to call that $100,000. We have been doing a little better, you see about the 150 number, but that's also for the in-district things, and lately more children have been kind of going out, so we might not get as much reimbursement, so I'm a little wary to keep bringing it up. Right this year here, what I've seen come in so far, it looks like it's going to be a little bit over 100 on the average, so I didn't want to go up too much on that.
What types of services would that...
I'm sorry, what?
What types of services would that cover?
Sorry.
Like, what, like just what types of services does the Medicaid reimbursement cover?
Some therapy, some therapy for therapy that we do in district, hearing tests, diet tests, things like that.
Speech, OT, counseling, sometimes. But it tends to be when the services rise above a certain level, so the students who are, who receive a fair amount of services.
I have a question, I just want to back up a little bit and go to Brent. It was just a few years ago that, I think it was 20, I don't think it was 30, but 25% of the eighth graders went elsewhere, off to private school. I hadn't seen anything like that in a long time. I'm wondering if one of the pluses for the new building, you know, build it and they will come kind of thing, I'm wondering if, if and when that passes, if that's a huge selling point for parents that are considering sending their kids elsewhere.
Oh, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think so. I don't, speaking with the, with Mr. Kelly and the eighth grade guidance council at the middle school, I don't believe there are a large number of students who are leaving the current...
Not now, this is years ago, and not too many years ago.
Yep, yeah. But it certainly would be, when you have a brand-new building.
Okay.
It certainly would motivate students to be part of it. In particular, when you're building a 7 to 12 building, because they'll already be part of that school and building culture, so...
Okay. Then, of course, interest income, we're going to go up a little bit on that, because the banks are starting to pay more interest. Misleading receipts, that, that becomes a variety of things. It used to be, if you go back to 2017, that was the year, we, sometimes we will take in special ed students from other districts. That person is now transitioned out, so we don't, you might get reimbursements for small things and things like that, but it's usually not a large number. E and D is estimated, and that's the money we'll break between going into stabilization and to fund the, other post-employee benefit lines, whatever that comes up to be. Hopefully we should have that number in a couple of days, I think it's going to be a little lower than that number, but we'll see. And the treasury subsidy, that's a QECB for the green repair projects that were done at the middle school, that offsets the interest on debt for that particular thing, so it just lessens the amount we charge the towns and the capital. So it's kind of, put it in our income scheme, so we ask them for less money, but apart of that. And the final things are the town assessments. What I usually go into this, assuming is the capital assessments are going to be based upon the October 1st enrollment numbers. Those will not change. That, our debt payment's known, and the population's known, and that's all you need to factor that number. And the larger ones, which is the operating assessments, I assume a 3% to each town, just for budgetary purposes starting out. That will also change when the governor's budget's finally produced, because then the Department of Education will get involved and determine the wealth factors and the net minimum spending for each town, and those will drop or go up, depending on the town. But I won't know that number until then, but for budgetary purposes, starting off, I just assume 2.5% plus a share of their new growth is about a 3% increase in their And that's basically, once I get that revenue, I add it up, then I have a, we have a starting point of a spending plan, I won't even call it a budget, it's just a spending plan at this point, because it's not balanced, so it's not a budget. And what we have right now is a deficit of 294,000. I know we all started out at about 1.3 million, but we, some internal decisions that you'll be hearing about have been made going forward. Obviously, that number will go up, go down, depending on the decisions you make in future meetings.
Are there any other questions on revenue?
Quick question, so, one of the things that I, I forget if it got put in here or not, is an increase in the school lunch...
Yeah, yes, the increase in school lunch did happen this year, it was voted by the school committee.
This current fiscal '19 or fiscal '20?
No, it was in '19.
Okay.
But the school lunch program by state charter of account law is its own separate entity.
Right.
What was happening is, you're not allowed to have that count be negative, or any account be negative, honestly. So what we're having to do is taking money out of the general fund to prop it up. As it looks right now with the increase this year, we won't be able to redo that.
Okay.
So there won't be any transfers from, into a food salary line or something that we would make up a general fund budget to use as an offset. So, yeah, it's working as intended.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so the next item is administration.
Well, so, so essentially, I think what I had envisioned for this was kind of an org chart as to administration, to show, essentially, we're pretty lean. I don't know if, I think Justin and Greg had said they might work on one, I don't remember. Just kind of showing what, what we have, that we don't have people just kind of floating around, not doing much of anything at all.
So I can describe it a little bit, if we want to do that? And hopefully my description, without it being visual, because I, when in doubt, I always go visual and have...
I'm going to take the hint, I thought that administration department, you wanted to talk about the things in the budget that were changing with the principals, vice principals, and internal software.
I mean, it can be anything. I think when I had requested, it was more just kind of showing what does our, and I know there's going to be a couple of changes for next year under that category.
Sure, we can talk about that too. So, yeah, I mean, we're a district of about 2,500 kids. We run essentially three elementary schools, but we know the one in Merrimack is in two separate buildings, and not on one campus necessarily. And then we run two separate buildings here. So administratively, we have a superintendent, we have an assistant superintendent, we have a business manager, and we have essentially a special ed director as well. And then we have an IT director. And most of the other central office administrative functions are performed by administrative assistants or personnel in, that work out of the business office, you know, in reality. The people who do most of the HR work, work, you know, we don't have an HR director, don't have an assistant special ed director, you know, those are not positions that we have. And we have an IT director, we don't have a director of digital learning and so forth. So there's a lot of positions that many districts may have. When you move from there, that's about it at central office, everything else is building-based administration. And our elementary schools have a building principal and no other administrative personnel in the building. They have support, student support special, student support...
Student service coordinator?
Students, I forget the actual title.
School support coordinator.
School support coordinator.
School support coordinator, now there you go, good job, Bernie.
And each building has one of those in their building, and they, they help support students, whether it be cafeteria hallway, they deal with some basic disciplinary things, bus, and a lot of things of the movement of students, but they're not administrators, they can't evaluate teachers, they don't provide instructional support to teachers, in order they really get involved in sort of the broader picture of student support and discipline, for instance. So, and then administratively, on this campus, we have a high school principal, a middle school principal, there's an assistant principal at the middle school, and we have two assistant principals here at the high school, one of them also, though, serves as in the role of athletic director. So, beyond that, you know, we don't have positions that are instructional and curriculum support positions, we don't have coaches. Our department heads are non-administrative positions, our department heads are teaching positions with a reduced teaching load. So they do provide some observation of staff, and they provide feedback, but whether or not they're the formal evaluators is not really the scenario we're in. So we have, you know, elementary principals evaluating 50 staff members. That's rather challenging to do in, with the current expectations around teacher evaluation. So that's what our current situation looks like, and it's definitely not, it's a, it's a thin administrative staff. And honestly, adding a few positions here or there, it would no longer be thin, but it wouldn't be robust either, you know, so...
Emily?
I have two question-ish comments about a couple of things that you've just said. So you said that there's no administrative role for curriculum support in the buildings, but we have been told in the past that that is the role of the STEAM coordinators, at least at the Page School. least at the Page School and the Bagnell. Are, is?
So it's a, it's a blend currently, they, they, they do direct teaching, they do help and support teachers with the curriculum and instruction, but they do not have administrative capacity to evaluate teachers. So oftentimes, you have roles that are purely instructional or curriculum, coaches or instructional leadership roles, that are more defined around their role, they'll do coaching cycles, they'll really, they'll drive professional development, so they'll do a lot of that work, and that is not, that's not really their function, so.
So I guess I'm curious, and I don't expect you to have an answer for this right now, how you foresee those positions playing a role going forward, because in the past, some of the concerns that a lot of parents, at least in Grobland, have had, and questions that have been asked of the previous administrative tours were around those positions, and not about those people, because that is not what this is, any of this is about, but if those positions are being utilized in the way to best support the particularly early literacy and math skills of the students at Bagnell, you don't have to comment on that, just at some point, we can talk about.
No, we can talk about some of it, and then I think some of it probably parlay's into the next budget workshop, where we're going to talk about sort of elementary staffing and schedules and so forth, so. I, you know, I think what's in the proposed budget is talking about adding assistant principals at the elementary schools, in particular at Bagnell and Merrimack, where student enrollment is near 500, if you combine the schools of Merrimack and Bagnell. And the evaluative caseload is, is excessive for, for one principal to provide, you know, reasonable and productive feedback. At the same time, it's, it's also part of the role of building leadership to be the instructional leader, and when you're one person, you can't necessarily do that. So I think that was sort of the role, was to, to move away from the student support coordinators into a more, a role that could be used in a more diverse manner, one that can provide some of the instructional leadership that's needed, and also provide the administrative building support that's needed, particularly in the schools that are really big.
So would the vision be of sort of, I get the vision of like what they would be doing, but in terms of where the money's coming from?
Yep.
Is that, I, is the idea eliminate, like taking the school support coordinator funding and the STEAM coordinator funding and, or are those, will there still, are we still planning for there to be a separate STEAM coordinator, or I, I know that there is a person in that role in the Merrimack schools, I just don't know exactly what to call it.
The IB coordinator.
Leave you out.
Yes, no, IB coordinator in the, in the Merrimack schools. So I think, and it's something we sort of put on for discussion, certainly in the next budget workshop, but, you know, to summarize real quick, because it does, I don't think we want to think of the, the plot of money as move, use this money for this necessarily, right? It sort of goes, but yes, the student support coordinators, that, shift that into that role, for sure, but that doesn't account for all of it, right? There's more to it there.
Right.
I think the, the thing to remember when we talk about with a 25% reduction in student enrollment, and that some of our staffing patterns in the district have not adjusted to that reduction, right? And like I said, it's, we're not, these aren't widgets, so if you have a 7% reduction in enrollment, you don't necessarily cut 7% of your staff, it doesn't work that way, right? Because you take two kids from there, and three kids from there, and two, it all accounts to your 7%, but we're, you know, you can't have a teacher, you don't cut a .2 of a teacher here and there. You can, it makes for a sort of a disastrous scheduling plan, for instance, if you have all these .8 and .6 positions all over the place, it's not helpful. So one of the things we really looked at were in particular, where were the staffing patterns that had not altered based on some of those student enrollments? And from year to year, you know, if you need, if you've got 60 kids at a grade level, you have three classroom teachers. If you've got 75 kids, you've got four. If you've got 48 kids, you've got two, so you adjust with that, right? But we haven't necessarily adjusted the positions at the elementary schools that aren't associated with the actual homeroom size, for instance, right? So the example is, in order to offer PE to every student in the elementary schools, K to six, we only need 2.0, actually, it's a little, technically, it's a little less, but to account for some flexibility, we only need two staff members to do that.
Elementary level.
Elementary level. We have three, right? And it's similar as you go across all of the, sort of those elective areas, right? So that's something that we're, we've looked at, and is there a way that we can consolidate some of that, not take away opportunities for kids necessarily, but be more mindful of how we schedule it, share some of those staffing positions across the elementary schools, and create more of a district-wide schedule, so that every student is getting the same from building to building, and that the schedules are aligned? And we think we can, we think we've been able to do that, and being able to take advantage of some of the retiring positions from the elementary school, and then being able to do some shifts where we have minimal staff reduction from that perspective. What that looks like, I think, is going to play out the next couple of weeks, I mean, I think we're, we still, we're pretty, pretty good that we know we can do it, and then we want to be able to provide you with obviously some visual of what it looks like, and I think at the next budget workshop, when we talk about elementary schools, we'll be able to do that. So I think that's where some of that funding comes from, where we shift some of that support into the administrative support for the buildings, because it's, the kids in the buildings need that type of support. The STEAM positions that exist would sort of be re-envisioned a little bit and put into those categories of being able to share STEAM teachers across multiple schools, being able to provide direct STEAM instruction to students in grades four, five, and six, for instance, and then potentially having them do some of those inclusionary coaching and inquiry-based support for K to three teachers when they are teaching science and math and social studies, so that they'll be able to go into those classrooms and support them, rather than teach an additional pull-out class. So we sort of see those as potential to have real blended positions, but it's, unless you have someone that's really defined as an instructional coach or a curriculum coach, it is hard to lay that expectation on them, rather moving that to the administrative capacity to join you, so.
Emily?
I have one more question. So I know there's this special ed director, like central office special ed director person, but is there a special ed coordinator, team leader, meeting runner person at each building? I know that there's some turnover.
Yep.
Not at our school, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so generally speaking, yes, there's a team chair or a special ed coordinator, which may be at each of the buildings, and they do facilitate the special education team meetings and the special ed process in each building. They are not administrative roles, which, which again, it's, it's sort of, they function that way, but they're not actually in an administrative role and capacity. So that adds to oftentimes, they, other than, excuse me, the one at the high school can is actually in the, in the, in the structure, but, so that has sort of contributed to that as well. And that's something in terms of when we move away from the schools that are bigger at the elementary with 500 students, and we look at maybe the Page, that's something that we might sort of consider, how do we maybe consolidate positions to get more administrative support to the Page School by also using a team chair position, so.
I was just wondering, because I know some other districts do, do certain, meetings on certain days, and with the sub-coverage.
Yep.
Concerns that we've had, obviously, you want to make meetings when families can be there, because that is, well, the law, but you also, I just was wondering if that is something that we can, you know, think about, you know, whether it's, and again, I don't, I'm not saying one school particularly, but I know that in other regional districts where they have two smaller schools, they, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the slightly bigger of the schools, and Tuesday, Thursday.
Yep, and they share the same team chair.
The same team chair.
See, and we don't, we have team chairs that exist in the buildings, because they're big enough, and the caseloads certainly of two of the buildings warrant it. You know, our middle school team chair, for instance, does actually flex down to help in some scenarios, too, so.
Mary?
So I, I'm just trying to keep it all straight, at this phase, you're thinking you may introduce vice principals to Merrimack and Grobland, but keep school support coordinator position at Page?
I think we're continuing to sort of look at what we would do with Page, and in particular, you know, the possibility of having a team chair also be the assistant principal, so that if we had sort of a combined position there as opposed to having a, a school support coordinator. So that would be something that we'll have to look at as we continue to move down, whether that works for, for the school or not, so, or whether it fits in our budget.
Thank you, Dick.
Did I, did I hear you say that the department chairs do observations only?
They do observations and staff, they're still in the bargaining unit, so there's, it's sort of a, it's a tricky spot for us sometimes, so.
Well, I, I would think that we could do something with the language, and I'm familiar at Hamilton One, and where my department chair did the eval and did the observations.
And they currently do.
And I would think that that would take a lot of the time and pressure off the administrators, and then when I went to Linfield, I did half of the staff, and the principal did the other half of the staff, and we kind of complemented each other in that regard, so it's really not one administrator doing 50, 60, at least, it shouldn't be.
The elementary schools, it is.
It probably is at the elementary, very much so at the elementary. And then shifting to the middle school, which no longer has teams, they're basically a, a junior high until that changes, do the department chairs have a responsibility?
Yes.
To observe the middle school?
Yep, they do.
Well, we used to have team leaders that were part of that at the middle school. Are we looking to move in that direction, or are we going to continue the practice of high school people evaluating middle school people?
So the, the evaluators are the building principals, and the content team chairs, oh, excuse me, the content department chairs help to provide observation and lead some of the content meetings.
Okay.
Are there any more questions on administration? So the next one is teacher?
Well, I think it's teacher contracts, I think there's a comma in there.
An erroneous comma.
So just in general, how is our budget driven at this point by our teacher contract that's there right now?
We have, we currently have four union contracts, we used to have five, the Nurses Union rolled back into the teachers' contract. So we have our, what you'd call the PTA Association of Teachers, our main, main contract that drives most of the cost of this budget. They are under contract for one more year, fiscal year '20 will be their last year their contract is for, and as we negotiated the last one, the average salary increase with all the things is 2.5. So it fits within the normal confines of the, of how we can grow. It's allowed us to continue moving forward, retaining staff, not a lot of turnover, people can have careers here, towns aren't asked for overrides, it's worked quite well, and I think everybody appreciates where it's been. This, we are currently right now negotiating with the paraprofessionals, the clerical, and the custodial unions. We're pretty well done with the clerical and the custodial part of it, the paraprofessionals is a much larger union to deal with, it's about 70 people, give or take, on a daily basis. And we had a second meeting with them this afternoon and exchanged ideas of what they were looking for and what we were looking for. So there'll be some analysis for that with another meeting, I think, the Wednesday before school vacation week in February, but that requires a lot more, shall we say, give and take as we go through it, because it's more of a financial thing, but we, the, the other two contracts look like they'll fall within the normal confines of probably 2.5, so I don't think there'll be any issues there. So that's where we are with those contracts, obviously, we have a food service contract coming up, but that's a revolving account one, so we're pretty well set. The teachers' contract for the next time would be, again, another driving, the big driving force that carries the three years after that, so. There's always, when we come to you with any contract, I know the first question is, everybody asks, can we afford this? So the first two, yes, and we're working on the third right now for the next fiscal year. In this budget, because all of this was done before they were, we assumed about a 2.5, we assumed a 2.5% growth, so.
So the, the other contracts you're negotiating are for fiscal year '20?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, like I said, this, we, the assumption here is that we'll keep them in the 2.5% range in growth, whatever factor may take, whether it's a stipend or all these things, but it, it's covered to that point in there, so, so far, we're okay.
Dick?
I had a conversation with a teacher who was really caught off-guard by this. This particular teacher went to the finish her masters and found that if she went to the masters column, she was actually going to lose money, but if she moved up a notch on the bachelors, she would actually make money.
You mean down?
Yes, has moved, moved down. And I found that to be unusual, because I remember when I got my masters, I moved over there, and it was a pretty good chunk of change in terms of being at the masters level as opposed to a bachelor's. I'm thinking that somewhere along the line, I'd like both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to work with you and see if those areas need to be repaired. The other thing that I looked at, that instead of first year, second year, third year, we've got ABCs, Ls, M's, I think that's kind of supercilious myself, and unnecessary, so I would be looking for two areas of consideration, once you start looking at teacher contracts, that they should be very, very clear, very, very transparent, and actually should make sense.
Actually, I can explain both of those to you fairly easily. By not doing the 1, 2, 3, ABC, that allows us flexibility if we need to hire a teacher in a very hard-defined area, like a high school physics teacher or chemistry teacher, it gives us some flexibility not to say, sorry, you're the first gig, yeah, that's all we can do for you. But by ABCs and things like that, it gives us some flexibility where they can begin on the salary.
You could put language in the contract that you could give credit for the years that they were at another school district.
That's the problem, because could, there are areas you don't want any part of doing that to.
Well, I'm thinking, we're so desperate for a physics teacher, I mean, that's true throughout Massachusetts, not just us.
Understood, but.
Wouldn't we be desperate enough to put language like that in there?
But you'd have to say, list those positions that you'd be willing to negotiate on, because it's certainly like an elementary school teacher, we can find them coming out of college in a year, and I don't want a principal to hire someone from another school district who's had 15 years' experience, because there's a relationship or whatever, even giving him that flexibility, I didn't want that. So that's why we just left it as the ABCs and stuff like that. As for your other thing, that is totally intentional, it was negotiated that way, because the teachers wanted to reduce their steps. It used to be, I think, 20, 17 steps, they wanted to collapse it.
I remember that.
With accelerated growth through the middle. So what we tell everybody is, look at the chart, it's pretty simple, yeah, you can still get your masters degrees and all your credits and things like that, but you'll notice there's a section in the middle, probably where you're looking, that it's much better to keep saying, I'll just take the year of service, as opposed to the education.
No, that's exactly where it's at.
And bank them, because once you get down to the last five or six steps in there, it doesn't matter, you can go across or down, and it becomes the same. So we say accelerate your salary through it.
Until it matches on the masters.
And then you can start taking those across, that's why it's done that way, because there's no other way, you could collapse it and make them equal, you just, the, the chart doesn't balance, so you can't do lines this way where it equals the same.
Okay.
The, the rows and columns are different, so you can't make it match up.
So do they get the choice whether they go down or over?
Yes, they do.
So they go, do whatever's best.
And we will, and we will caution them.
Okay.
We've had people come in and say, I got a masters with, and I said, no, 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 you don't want to do that. We're going to put that in your file, hold it, go down one, you get three grand, you go across, you only get 1,500. I didn't know that, thanks. Yeah, so they get down, don't worry, you'll get credit for it when you get to here, then start taking those, and then you can slide.
They got to hang around a while to get that, though.
Well, no, I mean, the way it was set up was we created basically the highest starting salary in Essex County for teachers, where we should be attracting good ones. After you get through the third year, and we decide that you're going to stay, in other words, you've met your standard.
Professional status.
Then you can accelerate even quicker through the process. So you, that's what they really wanted, so that's what we did.
Okay, that's a good explanation, thanks.
You're welcome.
Emily?
I was just going to say, we've actually had a subcommittee who meet, has met all of last year, and I've been on all of the meetings this year, but talking about some of these things. and I've been on all of the meetings this year, but talking about some of these things so that we as a school committee have a dialogue ongoing with the PAT membership. So that going into the next round of negotiations, some people have more than just, you know, people have been through this before, have not only a relationship with them, but like some idea of what their, you know, goals might be in this style of negotiation, which is a little bit different than, you know, the sort of us versus that negotiation.
Yeah, we we that's how we do it here now. It's more we sit across the table and just shoot ideas back and forth. The old way of here's our proposal, then you leave the room.
Is that the getting to yes model?
Yeah, so, yeah, so but it does seem to work a lot better.
It usually works until you start talking about money and then.
No, it's it's it works actually quite well mainly because we just show everybody we got. We're very transparent with them. Here's our revenue stream, this is what we've got. If you guys ask for this and I take your salaries and multiply it by your factor, it's going to cost us this. All I get from the towns is this, so it doesn't work. So we they, once they see it and you explain it to everybody, what we've got and how we can allocate it and any pressures that are upon us, it usually goes fairly quickly. So it hasn't been too, too bad lately when it comes to those type of things. But it's not like they call it interest bargaining.
Interest-based bargaining.
Interest-based bargaining. So it's my it's actually quite it's nicer. If you have the right people in the room, it's nicer, I think. If you have the wrong people in the room, I can see it going bad, yeah.
But also the truth of it is, I mean, you're supposed to be there working together. Like it should be.
Us versus them.
The teachers versus the administrators or the school committee. Like, we're all in this because we care about these children and their education. So it's it's just a a better way of focusing what you're there for, I think.
But I think in addition to that, the conversations that have been ongoing since the last contract also continue that discussion so that it's not like two years later, you're like, all right, well, we got screwed in this part of the contract, so. You know, that we all kind of know.
As you said, we we were very well aware we were going to have to educate some teachers when it came to when they started bringing in their credits. So we were, we made darn sure that they got to see that. It's right up on Diane's thing. She felt the thing, look at it and go, you don't want to do that.
And COA came up.
I'm sorry, what?
Cost of living, uh, yeah, COL, cost of living, uh, come up from the teacher's side because that was in the last negotiations. We, as a school committee, we all sat there the evening when they brought it up.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's type of it's it's to move the charts every year on top of the two and a half.
Well, I understand. I was actually opposed to that because all I saw was yes, 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 and then you want more.
Yeah, it's 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 a hard thing to do if you want the salary chart to equal two and a half and that's what you basically have. Like I said, we can talk about any type of factor you want. If you want to make the steps worth one and a half and make a cost of living adjustment of one, you know, it doesn't matter to me how you want to do it, but what we have is what we have. So you just be honest with them and tell them. I let them make the choices. We've always done that. This is what we've got. I'll basically cut it up any way you want, whatever works for you guys. But I can't give, we can't give you what we don't have, so. Do the best we can with it.
Is there anything else on our teacher contracts?
We gave them all the contracts.
So the on the last item is benefits discussion?
The assistant superintendent wistfully brought up the GIC, thank goodness. He, he has saved our buns, it really has. If you watch what the other towns are paying, other than Grobland, because Grobland joined the GIC, and I'll talk to Merrimack and oh, the Blue Cross went up 10% this year or 12% of some of the increases they get. It's basically the problem is if you go through the Blue Cross Blue Shield system, specifically which is the one people like, they don't treat everybody as a group. They'll treat you as a part of a group. So your your bargaining unit with them is like, if it's Merrimack, you're going in and say, we've got 50 employees, what can you do for us? And they're scared to death that one person could have open-heart surgery or something like that and the insurance company is going to lose big time, so they have to be careful. And it wasn't much different here. We were bigger, we probably had 300 people for the sake of argument. But by joining the GIC, now you're joining a group of 600,000. So the bargaining power of the state is a tremendous thing because the insurance companies know that they can change the rules on them as well. So they have a great deal of bargaining power when it comes to those type of things. Also, the risk of somebody having cancer, God forbid, or something, they get spread out over 600,000 people. So the rate increases and the risk to the insurance bidders are going to be a lot, lot less. So we've been having years of increases of one. I think last year was like minus a half a percent or something like that on average. This year here, they're coming out with 3.3 and I cautioned everybody not to be so worried about that because they'll say 3.3 is an average. It could be four or 5% on the heavy-duty plans, but the retirees could go down 1%. So I wait to see exactly whether it is cost per plan, then apply it to our people and get a new number compared to the budget that we play with. And that's when I bring it back to you and say, okay, I have this number in the budget. Now it looks like it's going to be this, so, yes.
When do you get that number?
GIC is always dead last.
Actually, getting 3.3 is their benchmark right now is actually early for them. I wouldn't expect to hear from them right until, I would say, the week we vote on what we're going to do, the assessments for the towns.
You have 600,000 people to deal with.
It's 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 six or seven plans, that's what they're dealing with right now. So they they will budget each one. They'll go into contract with them and say, this is what we can do, take this, we'll cut this. What they've gotten out so far is there'll be no change in deductibles. They will be adding one service, I believe, to one of the plans. But other than that, they're just working with the actual rate at this point.
This is a great move for the district. The retirees, however, their co-pays have gone from $10 to $30.
On the on the flip side, we're they're only paying 25% of the premium where they used to pay 50%.
I'm not. And how important that is, I'm just saying, I've talked to some retirees whose co-pays used to be $10 before GIC and now their co-pays are 30.
Well, hopefully Medicare is supposed to pick up once they reach 65. Medicare should pick up most of that. If there is, it's the difference, the people who before 65 retired, they're the ones in the retiree cycle will have co-pays and things. It's when you get over 65.
No, I'm I'm talking about the retired retired people.
Yeah, I mean, people retire when they're 60, 61, but they're not on Medicare yet, that's the problem. If once you get to 65, the Medicare is supposed to pick up most of it and then we go off as a supplemental player.
It's not, at least according to them.
Well, we were talking about switching to it. The representative of the retirees, Mary Perry, said one line to me, don't you dare leave the GIC. That was her response.
I'm 100% in favor of it on behalf of what it does for the district.
Any other questions? Is that it? Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
A pleasure, yep. We look forward to the next one, is that, when is the next one?
Next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, yep.
29.
At 6:30, not 6:00.
Yeah, because I think we have.
And the policy meeting is at 5:45.
So we'll have a similar format, it sounds like.
Is that the one that's the public hearing after two?
No, the public, the next budget workshop is the 29th. The public hearing is February 7th.
And I think that's the one where there's a few other technology.
The technology maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay. So we hope to be able to provide you some some visuals, I think, for next week that might help you understand some of the changes to that we're thinking of making from a staffing pattern perspective. You know, and and we can discuss that to to address those issues.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess we can officially or unofficially adjourn the meeting.
You don't need to vote, do you?
Nope.
All right, thanks, everyone.